Ladies and general, I'd like to call to order the commissioners' meeting for Thursday, March 20, 2025, at being 10:00 a.m. I'd ask that you please all join me in a moment of silent prayer. If you please join me and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America. We declare our land a free, sovereign, democratic, representative, and just as a republic.
Thank you. Executive session announcement.
We do not have any executive sessions this week.
Which is rare. A call for public comment on commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for having me. My name is Bonnie Miller. My husband Perry Miller. I've sent two emails, and in those emails, we state our name and our address and our phone number, that type of thing. And the subject we wanted to discuss is the preferred site of the prison. We need you to know that my husband and I have prayed before we began to write these words, and we hope you listen with open minds and hearts. First thing, we'd really like to invite all of you to visit our home at 15 Hillside Drive. So you can see firsthand why we are so concerned, and how it would impact our lives, along with impacting the desirability of our property. First of all, my husband has worked for 50 years to keep the lights on in our community, and even nationwide when destructive storms hit. And in his retirement, he is instructing the next generation to be able to do so. My career was in human resources, attending to employees' needs, and now, as an active volunteer, I attend to the needs of the vulnerable in our community when they don't know where to turn. So as you can see, we've stayed active, and we do our part in the community, but we never imagined that we would be faced with this type of situation. A situation where our home of virtually 30 years has seen us insignificant, to the point of building a prison in our backyard. Even the site is admittedly not an ideal choice, just remote enough. I have to ask you, what would you do if you were in our shoes? Imagine breakfast every morning overlooking a prison? And then, every evening, as you're putting your bedroom blinds down, you look out at a prison. Just saying the words, "Prison in my backyard," makes my stomach churn. I'm sorry. So, commissioners and chief clerk, we sincerely request that you consider another site which is truly remote, one that will not negatively change personal living spaces or disrupt the current prime farmland at the preferred site. We've had so many texts and calls from our friends and family since the article in the paper, saying to us, "Did you know there's going to be a prison in your backyard?" We humbly ask you not to make us the people with a prison in our backyard. Thank you very much.
Any other public comment?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Jeffrey Behrens of 768 North Douglas Lane in Anis Township, and I'm also the vice president and general manager of Alto Rest Park Cemetery Association, Incorporated of 109 Alto Rest Park in Allegheny Township. I thank the Board of Commissioners for this opportunity to speak both as a resident and a business owner in our county. On January 7, 2025, Alto Rest Park received a letter from the Blair County Commissioner's Office that included an offer to purchase a 77-acre portion of land owned by us, and requested a response in three days. The county stated in that letter that it wants to use the land to construct a new prison, and claimed in the offer that our land was necessary for the project. On January 17, 2025, the Board of Directors of Alto Rest Park declined the offer. In the meeting of the Blair County Commissioners held a month ago, they discussed three potential sites for the new prison, and even though we made it clear in our response that we are not interested in selling our land, they stated in the meeting that our property is still the preferred site to build the new prison. When RP Good founded Alto Rest Park in 1925, he promised the citizens of Blair County that our grounds would provide a place of peace for generations. He committed to our community that we would have burial grounds at Alto Rest Park that were permanent and perpetually maintained, and designed our property to offer comfort and beauty to those experiencing unexplainable pain and sadness. RP intentionally chose this land with the knowledge that preparing the future was critical to fulfilling his promise. Alto Rest Park is now being led by the third and fourth generations of our family, and our commitment to the community members remains the same. Accordingly, all of the property owned by Alto Rest Park is vital to our sustainability. At this particular 77-acre portion of our land is our most viable expansion area, and continued expansion in our park is not far away. Having our land taken by the county would severely limit, if not completely hinder, our ability to operate in the future. If the county commissioners intend to acquire our land, we would ask that they consider the adverse impact that it would have. Impact on the over 20,000 families that have entrusted us with the care of their loved ones' final resting place, impact on future generations' ability to find the same peace and beauty that Alto Rest Park has always provided, and impact on our family's promise to this community that we have worked so hard to uphold over the last 100 years. Our family agrees that we need to upgrade our county prison, but doing it at the expense of us and the families that have chosen Alto Rest Park, who are also owners of our land, and hindering the ability to serve the community now and in the future doesn't seem like the best way to solve the problem. There are opportunities, there are other properties that could be utilized that do not adversely affect businesses or grieving families in our county. We appreciate this community allowing us to serve them, and we hope that the county commissioners will consider the impact to our area families before proceeding down the road of doing irreparable harm to not only our family's commitment, but more importantly, to the community that we promised to serve. Thank you for allowing me the time to comment.
Any other public comment?
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
When I first came up here, I was maybe a little selfish, but I heard this woman speak right here, and I can't imagine, what can you imagine, having a prison in your backyard?
Could you please state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
John McIntyre. I live in Frankston Township. I'm a member of Blair County.
I recognize you now, I just can't see that.
That's okay. And I'm here because I think it's important for the community. One of the things that Jeff Behrens has said, and I echo, is the fact that the other premises that you've looked at don't impact a business. You know, I know for a fact, because I've read in the Alto Nomer a couple times now, there's 150-plus acres in the Holidaysburg School District off of Route 36, I believe, okay? I can leave this if you haven't seen it. It's less money, I believe, than anything you've offered so far to any of the parcel owners, and it's not adjacent to any homes, it's not taking your business property, and it doesn't impact our community. So, as a citizen, taxpayer, I'm concerned about how much money we're going to spend, and whether we need to get into a legal fight for eminent domain, or whether the county commissioners can simply buy a piece of property that's for sale. So, just consider the impact, not only to the cemetery, but to these folks and all the other property owners that live along there, and think about if you want to have a prison in your backyard. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Commissioners' comments.
Our chief clerk and I had the opportunity to attend the CCAP conference, CCAP being the County Commissioners Organization for Pennsylvania. It's a lobbying group, and our purpose is to try to convince the legislature to make changes and things that would be beneficial to the counties. We happen to have the opportunity to meet with the legislators, they're in the middle of budget season, and we hope that our comments and our time with them was well-spent, and that they will take into consideration the requests and needs of the counties and of our citizens, which Commissioner Burke had discussed a couple of weeks ago in one of our prior meetings. Just wanted to let you know, we attended, and we're working towards getting things from the legislature that would be helpful for our county. Thanks.
Okay, proclamation?
We have a proclamation today because this is Pennsylvania 4H Week, March 16 through 25 of 2025. Whereas, 4H is America's largest youth development organization, supporting nearly 6 million youth across the country, and whereas, 4H has helped youth in county to become confident, independent, resilient, and compassionate leaders as they learn by doing. And whereas, 4H in Pennsylvania is delivered by Penn State Cooperative Extension in rural areas, small towns, and cities in all 67 counties of the Commonwealth, to more than 77,000 youth aged 5 through 18. And whereas, 4H youth in Pennsylvania are served by a network of staff members and more than 6,000 adult volunteers who engage and mentor youth in learning activities and hands-on projects in topics such as animal science, civic engagement, STEM, and health and wellness. And whereas, 4H Week in Pennsylvania showcases the incredible ways that 4H inspires kids to achieve and highlights the remarkable 4H youth in county, who work each day to make a positive impact on those around them. And whereas, 4H's network provides youth with opportunities for leadership development, career exploration, problem-solving, friendships, community involvement, passion, and purpose. Now, therefore, we do hereby proclaim Pennsylvania 4H Week throughout Blair County, and encourage our citizens to acknowledge and celebrate 4H for its valuable service and continued efforts to empower youth with a foundation of success for a lifetime. I propose this in the form of a motion.
Second emotion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
And I would like to recognize, we have members of Penn State Extension and 4H here today, Jeff Hackenberg and Christina Corle. And would you like to say anything?
Just wanted to say a thank you, first of all, to the commissioners for your continued support of Extension's work and 4H's work in serving the people of Blair County. We do very much appreciate your support. And also, the people of Blair County were very well-supported with many wonderful volunteers and great kids in our program. And so, just wanted to express our gratitude for all. Thank you.
Thank you. We're signing your proclamation.
Thank you very much. We would love to get a picture with you, too.
Before we get into the consent agenda, I do want to make a comment with the testimony that has been stated. So, we appreciate you coming here and expressing your opinion. We sympathize with the impact that it would have on your home and your residence, as well as the Alto Rest property, and we certainly will take that into consideration. I do want you to know that this has been well over a year and a half's search. It's not something that... And there's been many, many, many sites that have been looked at and assessed. So this isn't something that's a knee-jerk reaction, this isn't something that, you know, we've not put some thought into it. Unfortunately, nobody wants a prison in their backyard, nobody. It doesn't matter where we put this prison, there's going to be people that are going to be upset, whether we take farmland, or we cut down trees, or anything like that. The other thing that we take into account as well is that, I'm sure people would like us to put this on some mountain somewhere, but we're the ones that have to pay to put the electric, the sewer, the water, and we have to worry about the transportation costs getting to and from a court system. So, again, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, I would like to thank you for coming here and giving your heartfelt feelings on this, and we certainly understand that, as well as the Alto Rest coming here. I can't, we can't comment on that, because as you know, this is now between the attorneys, so I really can't comment on any of that. But I just want you to know that this has not been an easy process, it's not been an easy decision. And again, we will certainly take into account your presentation today, as well as the Alto Rest in making a decision. So I just wanted to comment on that. So thank you. Could you please take us through the consent agenda?
Thank you. Consent agenda, Resolution 99-2025, Section A is the ratification of 12 warrant lists listed here. B, ratification of total payroll for the paycheck dated January 24, 2025, and the total amount of $902,196. We have a 2025 budget transfer for the maintenance of county vehicles in the amount of $802.59, and building maintenance in the amount of $274. And in Sections E, F, and G, we have our employment status changes and resignations.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I am an aye with abstentions to payments to Holidaysburg Borough and Blair Senior Services.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Staff reports and special business, Parks and Rec, Joe.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
The Park and Rec Board solicited proposals to repair the parking lot at the Valley View Park for the soccer field area, and we obtained three quotes. One from Glenn O'Hobaker for $19,560, which we did receive late. Cottle's Asphalt for $19,240. New Enterprise Stone and Lime for $17,940. So the Blair County Recreation Board recommends the award to New Enterprise Stone and Lime Company.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the quote received from New Enterprise Stone and Lime for the amount listed. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions?
I'm just happy that we were able to have this happen. This will continue the use of the soccer fields and a place for folks to park. That is such a mess, that parking lot, but this is a much better cost than completely redoing it, and it should give us another 10 years or so of use. So this is fabulous, you guys have done a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thanks, Joe.
Thank you very much.
Ray.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
If you're not aware, I'll make you aware, on December 10 of 2024, a skeletal remains were found on the southern part of Anis Township. Since then, my office, along with the Pennsylvania State Police, Alto Nomer Police Department, have diligently been trying to identify these skeletal remains. Based on the collaborative work that we've put together, we're pretty confident who we think this may be. The final piece would be the DNA cross-matching of some relatives, which, by the way, I tracked down in Boise, Idaho, so we've got some time wrapped up in this. What I present to you today is a quote that's been provided by Guardian Forensic Services for the DNA sampling of the family members with the skeletal remains at a cost of $2,300. I asked the commissioners to approve that, so I can proceed with identifying this individual.
I'll make a motion to approve the quote for Guardian Forensic Science for the DNA sampling of the unidentified skeletal remains. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Warden.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here to request the approval of a service agreement between the County of Blair on behalf of the Blair County Prison and William Hillack, doing business as Summit Radiation Safety Services, to provide an annual radiation safety evaluation of the Tech 84 X-ray Body Scanner Unit, a radiation safety audit, and an annual radiation safety officer training for the total cost of $775.
I'll make a motion to approve the service agreement between the County of Blair, Blair County Prison, and the Summit Radiation Services, the TK-884 X-ray Body Scanner, and training for the officers for the amount listed. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you, sir. I'm requesting approval of the quote received from Tech 84 Incorporated for the Tech 84 Intercept Whole Body Scanner Security Scanning System Annual Service Agreement for the period of December 2, 2024 through December 1, 2025, in the total amount of $10,900.
I'll make a motion to approve the quote from Tech 84 for the system's annual service agreement from December 2, 2024, through and including December 1, 2025, in the amount listed. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Mr. Montgomery. This is twice today, Russ.
Requesting approval of the contract between the County of Blair, Blair County Public Defender's Office, and Justice Tech, Inc., for the purchase of a site-wide license to the Justice Tech platform for the period of February 1, 2025, through January 31, 2026, in the amount of $8,000. This will be paid out of the Indigent Defense Grant.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract between the County of Blair Public Defender's Office and Justice Tech statewide license for the Justice Tech platform for the period of February 1, 2025, through and including January 31, 2026, in the amount listed that's paid out of the Indigent Defense Grant. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
Sarah's not here. You gonna take it?
Yep. Sarah is at a court hearing this morning, and she asked me to present this on her behalf. Requesting approval for acceptance of the bids received for the printing of election ballots and to award or reject per county code thereafter. We have two bids. William Penn Printing in the amount of $175,760, at 26 cents per price, price per ballot, excuse me. NPC Inc. for total of $131,820, with a price per ballot between 18 cents and 21 cents.
I'll make a motion to approve the acceptance of the bids received for the printing of the election ballots to award or reject per county code. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, Robin.
Good morning. I'm here requesting an approval of a service agreement for an extension between the County of Blair on behalf of the Prothonitaries Office and Modern Business Services for two of my electreevers and seven compact movable shelving systems for the period of January 1 of 2025 to January 1 of 2026, in the total amount of $2,331. This is an annual fee. This fee has not gone up for many years. They haven't raised their price on this service agreement, and just to add this, there is no cost to the county on this. I pay this out of my prothonitary reserve fund, so this is not a cost to the county.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the service agreement extension from the Prothonitaries Office to Modern Business Services for movable shelving systems, I'm not going to say those words, for the period of January 1, 2025, through and including January 1, 2026, in the amount that is listed. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Bailey. Scott here. There he is, hiding in the back. Good morning.
Good morning. So we're requesting approval of the agreement for purchase under bidding threshold between the County of Blair on behalf of the Blair County Adult Probation and Parole, and Farm Chem for drug testing, sweat patches, and analysis, et cetera, and county-approved purchase orders.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement between the Blair County Adult Probation and Parole with Farm Chem for drug testing and sweat patches and analysis. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My first item, I'm requesting approval of the professional services agreement between the County of Blair on behalf of the Department of Emergency Services and MCM Consulting Incorporated to conduct a commodity flow study involving a manner in which the transportation of hazardous materials flows through the county, the County of Blair, by highway, rail, and pipeline for thirteen thousand, five dollars, with eight thousand dollars being paid by the federal fiscal year twenty-twenty-four through twenty-twenty-five HMEP grant, and the remaining five thousand, five dollars being paid out of the LEPC funds.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the agreement between the County of Blair on behalf of the Department of Emergency Services and MCM Consulting Group to conduct a commodity flow study for the transportation of hazardous material through Blair County by highway, rail, and pipeline in the amount listed. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed?
I am requesting approval of the twenty-twenty-four annual report on the hazardous materials preparedness, HMEP, I'm sorry, HMERP, report to be entered into the ESA by myself, Chris Fredrickson, which will serve as the HMRF grant application for July of twenty-twenty-five through June of twenty-twenty-six.
Make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-four annual report of hazardous materials preparedness entered into the ESA in the application from July twenty-twenty-five through June twenty-twenty-six. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm requesting approval of the quote received from Aristatech Incorporated for eight annual licenses of Peak WMD, which includes Tier Two integration and commodity hazardous, hazard vulnerability analysis, and worst-case analysis for planning, exercise, and response for a period of April fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five, through April fourteenth, twenty-twenty-six, in a total amount of five thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars.
And?
Four, I'm sorry. Four thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars will be reimbursed through the HMEP, and the remaining eleven, one thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars will be paid with the LEPC Hazardous Materials Fund.
And Chris, you said a lot there, and I'm not sure people understand what this is. Could you just give us a brief?
It's software that the hazmat team and EMA uses in response to a hazardous materials event or in planning for a response to the SARA facilities, which are the chemical facilities within the county. So it uses the current information that we have that has been reported by those facilities in addition to current weather conditions. So if there's a release somewhere, we can pull that up, what the substance is, and the direction of the wind, to see who we need to evacuate or shelter in place.
Thank you very much. Like I said, I said, you said a lot, but I'm not sure people understand exactly what you're saying. So I'll make a motion to approve the quote received from Aristic, Rista?
Aristatech.
Aristatech for the eight annual license for the Tier Two integration of the hazardous vulnerability analysis from April fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five, through and including April fourteenth, twenty-twenty-six, in the amount listed. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Again, thank you for the explanation. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Glenn.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm here to request approval of the quote received from the New Look Uniform for T-shirts to be sold in the Fort Roberta Gift Shop in the amount of one thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve the quote received from New Look Uniform for T-shirts to be sold at Fort Roberta in the amount listed. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. The second item is requesting approval of the agreement between the County of Blair on behalf of Fort Roberta and the Altoona Mirror for advertisement in the Altoona Mirror Special Editions throughout the twenty-twenty-five calendar year as outlined in the agreement in the total amount of three thousand, and eighty-four dollars and fifty cents.
Make a motion to approve the agreement between the County of Blair on behalf of Fort Roberta and the Altoona Mirror for advertisements in special editions through the twenty-twenty-five calendar year in the amount listed. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. Item three is requesting approval of the quote received from BDS Partners LLC, known as PressGeek, for fifteen thousand Fort Roberta twenty-twenty-five brochures in the total amount of one thousand, three hundred dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve the quote received from BDS Partners for Fort Roberta brochures for twenty-twenty-five in the amount listed. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And the last item, requesting approval of an advertising agreement between the County of Blair and Where and When, it's a travel guide for a summer and fall, one-quarter-page advertisement in the total amount of one thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars.
Glenn, do we get any feedback when you do these advertisements? Is there any feedback from those particular companies or entities that, amount of people that they hit, and the amount of people because of the advertisement actually come to the fort?
Yes. Where and When is like the Pennsylvania premier travel guide, and it's based in Lancaster, and that's their biggest market, and it's nice. And especially at our special events, we have a hospitality tent, and we interview people as they come in and check. And Where and When is sufficient, and also the Altoona Mirror, there is a notice because of being local and the different demographics read the paper, and it increases our attendance as well.
Okay, thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the advertising agreement between the County of Blair and Where and When for the summer of the one-quarter-page advertisement in the amount listed. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you.
Mindy, you're up, and you usually take most of the agenda, but today, you're not.
Not today.
Short and sweet.
Yep. We're requesting approval of fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five purchase of service agreement and HIPAA Business Associate Agreement between the County of Blair, Blair County Children, Youth, and Families and Hoffman Homes.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five purchase service agreement between HIPAA Business Associate and Hoffman Homes Incorporated. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you tag teaming today, because it's a lot?
Yes, yes. Thank you. Good morning. Requesting approval of an Affordable Housing Trust Fund dispersment for the Deferred Weatherization Program to assist with moisture deficiencies in the basement at one-thirty-eight Wingard Lane, Holidaysburg, in a total amount of ten thousand dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve the Housing Trust Fund dispersment, weatherization program for the moisture deficiencies in the address listed in the amount listed. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Any comments or questions?
Is it really Holidaysburg? I thought Wingard Lane was Lake Mon area. Doesn't really matter.
That's the address I was given, so.
All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Okay.
Okay, requesting approval of an Affordable Housing Trust Fund dispersment for the Deferred Weatherization Program to assist with roofing, roof leaking, and moisture deficiency deficiencies at two-twenty-four Liberty Lane, Dunkinsville, for the total amount of ten thousand dollars.
Make a motion to approve the Affordable Housing Trust Fund dispersment, weatherization program for the roof leaking and moisture at the address listed in the amount listed. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Thank you.
Okay, requesting approval of an Affordable Housing Trust Fund dispersment for the Deferred Weatherization Program to assist with moisture deficiencies in the basement at thirteen-eighteen Windbrook Street, Altoona, in the total amount of ten thousand dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve the Deferred Weatherization Program for the moisture deficiencies in the basement at the address listed in the amount listed. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed?
Requesting approval of an Affordable Housing Trust Fund dispersment for the Deferred Weatherization Program to assist with moisture deficiencies in the basement and roof at one thousand West Loop Road, Holidaysburg, in the total amount of ten thousand dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve the Deferred Weatherization Program for the moisture and roof issues that are at the address listed in the amount listed. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed?
Requesting approval of an Affordable Housing Trust Fund dispersment for the Code Compliance Repair Assistance Program to assist with code ordinance violations, which include removal of a recreational vehicle and dilapidated boat trailer at six-fifteen White Street in Holidaysburg, in the total amount of five thousand dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve the Affordable Housing Trust Fund dispersment for code compliance, repair, and assistance for the removal of a recreational vehicle and dilapidated boat and trailer at the address in the amount listed. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We are requesting approval to submit the Blair County Early Intervention Program Report to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Human Services for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three.
Make a motion to approve to submit the Blair County Early Intervention Program to DHS for twenty-two, twenty-three. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Thank you.
Okay. Also, requesting approval of the quote by and between the County of Blair and HSS Systems to change service codes in the HSS software in the total amount of five hundred dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve the quote between the County of Blair and HSS Systems to change the service codes for the HSS software. Any amount listed. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions?
This is the state software they make us use?
Yes.
And we think we might be getting something new soon?
Hopefully. Keep your fingers crossed.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Thank you.
Okay, also, requesting approval to accept the connect-to-home coordinate, coordinated entry agreement as presented and grant Tricia Johnson, Blair County Social Services Director, permission to sign the said agreement.
I'll make a motion to approve and accept the connect-to-home coordinated entry agreement and grant Tricia Johnson, Blair County Special, or Social Services Director, permission to sign the said agreement. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? And if you could just expand on the home coordinated entry, and can you say what that is for?
No, I can't, actually.
Okay.
Because it's not mine, on my department.
Okay, thank you.
Just presenting it today, but I can have them get information to you.
All right, thank you.
We're also requesting approval of the memorandum of understanding between the County of Blair on behalf of the Blair County Social Services and Pyramid Healthcare to refer clients needing another level of care between the reciprocating agencies where clinically appropriate.
I'll make a motion to approve the MOU between the County of Blair, Blair County Social Services, and Pyramid Health to refer clients needing another level of care, higher or lower, between the agencies. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Okay.
Also, requesting approval of the reciprocal agreement between the County of Blair, Blair County Department of Social Services, and Indiana County, and this is for a Blair County resident who is being discharged from the Torrance State Hospital to Indiana County for a period up to a year after the discharge date, and upon completion of that year, Indiana County will resume responsibility for that resident.
Make a motion to approve the reciprocal agreement between the County of Blair and Indiana County for the Blair County resident who's discharged from the Torrance State Hospital. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed?
Okay, last one. Requesting approval to submit the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four income and expense report revision number one to the Department of Human Services for block grant counties for mental health, intellectual disabilities, drug and alcohol, and human services program.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four income and expense report revision number one to DHS for the block grant counties in mental health, intellectual disabilities, drug and alcohol, and human services. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nick.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm requesting approval of a quote between the County of Blair and Burke and Company LLC, also known as S.P. McCarroll and Company, for five new HVAC units for the courthouse in a total amount of twenty thousand, five hundred and eight dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve the quote between the County of Blair and the Burke and Company LLC, or also known S&amp;P McCarroll and Company, for five new HVAC systems in the amount listed. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed?
I abstain from that one.
For obvious reasons?
Yes.
Okay. One of the attention.
This is great. This is, this is a part of a continuing maintenance of the building plan.
I'm also requesting approval of the contract between the County of Blair and David M. Maines Associates Incorporated for the roof replacement for the Highway Department Elections Building in the total amount of nine hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
Today, or this year is the year of roofs.
Yes.
Yes.
Requesting, yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the contract between the County of Blair and David M. Maines for the roof replacement of the Highway and Department, Department and Elections Building in the amount listed. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Requesting approval of a change order, resolution three-three-nine dash twenty-twenty-four for County Roads one-oh-five and one-oh-five-A rehab project for an increase in the substantial completion date to May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, and a decrease of twenty thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty-four cents in the contract price. The new total amount of the contract is two million, two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars, and thirty-six cents.
Paul, do we know what the decrease was for?
It was material and some stuff that they didn't use, that they didn't need, so.
We like decreases.
Yes.
We just wanted to know why.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve change order number one, resolution 339-224, for County Roads 105 and 105 rehabilitation for the decrease in the total amount listed. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Requesting approval of change order two for the County Road 105105A rehab project to secure ownership of the Millings and transportation of the Millings to Valley View Park for the increase of $5,056. The new total amount of the contract is $2288,912.36.
I'll make a motion to approve the change order number two for County Roads 105105A rehab project for ownership of the Millings and transported to Valley View Park in the amount listed. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions?
This is, I can, this is the other part of what Joe Keller proposed earlier that we accepted to fix the Valley View parking lot. It came together.
Yes. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Thank you.
Thanks.
Good morning. I'm requesting approval of an amendment to the service agreement between County of Blair and PMA Management Corporation for the administration of the runoff workers' compensation claims for the period of January 1st, 2025, through December 31st, 2025, in annual amount of $14,280 plus additional fees as outlined in Exhibit A.
Emily, if you could, because it kind of sounds funny, the administration of runoff workers' compensation claims. It sounds like something's out of control. Can you explain just briefly?
Sure. There were workers' compensation claims that were additional ones that they didn't cover, so they were claims that they took over, but they didn't cover. So there's approximately, there's three of them that they didn't cover.
So nothing's out of control going down the tracks?
No. They're just holding on to three of them that they just didn't take over.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll make a motion to approve the amendment of service agreement between the County of Blair and PMA Management Corporation for the administration of runoff workers' compensation claims from January 1st, 2025, through and including December 31st, 2025, in the amount listed. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Thank you.
I am requesting approval of the renewal agreement between County of Blair and Interflex Payments Doing Businesses Ameriflex for administration of our FSA and DCA accounts for the planned year April 1st, 2025, through March 31st, 2026. The only changes will be increases in the maximum FSA funding limit and carryover limit to the 2025 IRS maximum amounts. And I am also requesting, because it is an electronic annual renewal, permission to complete that electronic signing on behalf of Commissioner Kessling as the authorized representative of Blair County.
I'm making a motion to approve the renewal agreement between the County of Blair and Interflex Payment LLC to administer the flexible spending account from April 1st, 2025, through and including March 31st, 2026. The increase is noted and to approve electronically signing on behalf of myself as the authorized representative for the County of Blair since it's electronic. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Okay. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I'm here with the Deputy Court Administrator Jessica Miller to request approval of a grant application. This is an annual grant application that we, the court, submits to the Administrative Office of Pennsylvania Courts for reimbursement of our interpreter services line item in the court budget. We are required by a number of different rules of judicial administration and state and federal statutes to provide language access services to individuals in court. Obviously, that requires us to pay interpreters to do that. Once we get our annual amount, then we are allowed to seek reimbursement for the previous year's amount. This is just a partial grant reimbursement. I think it's up to 30% that AOPC reimburses us for that. So this is just the application for us to make that request so that we can get money back in the general fund for you. This year's amount, $19,477.19. This amount has steadily increased over the years due to the need involved.
Okay.
Questions? Sorry. Any questions?
No. I'll make a motion to approve the court interpreter services grant application for reimbursable costs for the calendar year of 2024, in the amount listed. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm requesting the approval of the awarded PCCD grant, the RASA grant, for the project period of January 1st, 2025, through December 31st, 2025, in the awarded amount of $95,148 to cover victim witness fees.
I'll make a motion to approve and accept the PCCD Rights and Services Act, RASA, grant for the period of January 1st, 2025, through and including December 31st, 2025, in the amount listed. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Juvenile probation, requesting approval for the payment of an invoice made outside the county purchasing policy between the County of Blair on behalf of the Blair County Juvenile Probation Department and Parkside Psychological Associates LLC for a juvenile psychological assessment in the amount of $1,350.
I'll make a motion to approve the payment of invoice from the County of Blair on behalf of the JPO to the Parkside Psychological Association for a psychological assessment of a juvenile in the amount listed. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Thank you.
Aye, aye. Juvenile probation, requesting approval for the acceptance of the Victims of Juvenile Offenders Grant Award, subgrant number 2023 VF10744558, from the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency effective January 1st, 2025, to December 31st, 2025, in the amount of $33,540.
I'll make a motion to approve and accept the VOJO Grant Award from PCCD from January 1st, 2025, through and including December 31st, 2025, in the amount listed. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. The most exciting item on the agenda, the audit. I am requesting approval of the ZA LLC engagement letter and governance letter, including the peer review for the 2024 audit. You've already approved, we've got a three-year contract with ZA that was approved. This is the final year. We'll need to renegotiate that for next year. We've already got an approved purchase order. This is just the engagement letter spells out what they're going to do, how they're going to do it. Same thing every year, pretty much, and the governance letter talks about the rules of how they're doing, what they're doing. So I would appreciate your approval.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the ZA engagement and government letter for the peer review and audit for 2024. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I'm requesting approval for the submission of the county settlement allocation report for the period of July 1st, 24 through December 31st, 24, for the opioid misuse and addiction abate to the opioid misuse and addiction abatement trust.
A lot to be said there.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the submission of the county settlement allocation report from January, July, excuse me, July 1st, 2024, through and including December 31st, 2024, to the PA Opioid Misuse and Addiction Abate Trust. May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
All right. Second item is requesting approval to submit the 2024 LATCF Annual Report to the Department of the Treasury. These are funds that we have received two years in a row. It's a total of $100,000. So until that grant fund is closed out, we have to continue to submit reports. So we don't actually have any expenditures for 2024 since we used it in '22, '23.
And Tribal Consistency Fund.
That's the name they gave it. It's for our pilot program.
Okay.
So the properties that we don't receive tax revenue on, it's supposed to help us keep revenue for the properties that we don't get taxes for.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve and submit the 2024 LATCF Annual Report to the U.S. Department of Treasury. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed?
All right. So the next one is the electric supply pricing. I received an email from Mike Palowski this morning. I sent to all of you, giving the pricing that our two suppliers, Shell and Dynergy, gave for one and two-year contracts. So for Dynergy, the one-year price is 7.287. The two-year price is 7.100. For Shell, the one-year price is 7.453, and two-years is 7.278. This is a fixed price, but the capacity and transmission is passed through, so we pay that based on usage. So Mike's recommendation was to go with the two-year fixed price term at a not-to-exceed amount of 7.4 cents, and that's because the market may change after he sent it last night because it keeps changing.
Because it changes constantly.
Constantly. Yes.
So to vote on this, are we voting on the two-year fixed? I mean, it's not, or are we just approving Mike's solutions to lock in the rate but not specifically saying the rate?
We would not specifically say the rate. We would say that it's a not-to-exceed amount of 7.4 cents per kilowatt for the two-year fixed term.
Okay. Thank you. I make a motion to approve the county's electrical supplier and authorize Mike Palowski Energy Solutions to lock in the electrical supply rate not to exceed 7.4 kilowatts, cents per kilowatt for a period of a two-year fixed period. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Under Commissioners, I'd like to make a motion requesting approval to advertise a public hearing for the decertification of the TPA. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed?
I'm going to abstain. Just, I'm not sure technically I need to, but because of the prior conflict, because it's not substantive, but I will go ahead and abstain out of abundance of caution.
Thank you. Also requesting or make a motion to approve to advertise an ordinance signifying the intent to take by imminent domain a fee simple interest of two parcels of land in the township of Allegheny. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions?
So, I mean, I don't understand what that means.
So, by law and statute, if the county or government unfortunately has the right to take a property, even if the people who own the property do not want to give up that property. So it's, that's what it means by imminent domain. It's a section in the statute and the law that allows a government body to be able to take that action.
And so, so what this is saying is that's what the commissioners are planning to do right now, just take that parcel of ground in terms of your plan?
I don't know.
This is the advertisement.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is just for the advertisement of it in the event that it goes in that direction. So there's steps that we must take if we're going to do that, and this is just a step in that direction if things can't be worked out.
And there is still a possibility that, like this one gentleman said about some other possible sites, that you can still look into that?
As I stated before, is, what I, I think what we need people to understand is that this is not a knee-jerk reaction. This has been an ongoing, well over, I think maybe a year and a half, two-year process where many pieces of land have been looked at and assessed and evaluated, and these are the three that the company that we contracted with to do the assessment provided us, saying these are your, these are your three options based on that. So that's what we have to take into account. There's still a lot of steps to be taken. There's still a lot of, hopefully, negotiations to be had. But again, this is a process that we must take. This is part of the process that we must take legally. So this is just approving the advertisement of the ordinance for that in the event of, so.
So we're just, we're not done looking, is what we're saying. We're still looking for other possibilities that truly would be better for you.
That's not what this is. This is the area behind the lot up in there. There's access to it. I can pick up to it. It's remote. No people living around it. To me, it looks like ideal spot.
Any other comments or questions?
I wanted to comment because I did not receive the email from the Millers until I returned from vacation today. I believe the ordinance is specific to these properties, and I don't see the harm in waiting